It's no secret that I support Medicare for All.
I don't.
And that I endorsed Elizabeth Warren and Bernie Sanders in the primary.
Both good people.
Throughout the Democratic primary, you made clear your opposition to single payer, Medicare for All, and you have won the nomination. But in recent months, 20 million Americans have lost their jobs and many have lost their health insurance with it. Democrats overwhelmingly support Medicare for All, and it's especially popular among young people. And even your friend, Barack Obama, said recently that it is a good idea.
Democrats aren't just running on good old ideas, they're running on good new ideas, like Medicare for All.
So my question is, do you see a future where health insurance is no longer tied to employment? Will America ever have a single payer system where healthcare is guaranteed as a human right?
Healthcare guaranteed is a human right, but taking away the right to have a private plan if you want a private plan, I disagree with. I disagree with. There's three things that I propose that we can do, and we can do it quickly. I support a public option as well. We can get a public option passed, and we can get it passed quickly. Number one. Number two, I propose spending almost a trillion dollars to make sure that people can get a goal plan in Obamacare, subsidizing anyone who wants to get in with a goal plan. Number three, providing for the option to have home care paid for and elder care paid for, not as part of Medicare, as just a basic right. It's an absolute basic right. And so I believe we can do all the things you want to do and do them better, more quickly than with Medicare for All. But we have the same goal, because healthcare is a right, not a privilege. It should be a right, not a privilege.
Vice President, I hope you understand this issue is personal for me. This isn't abstract or theoretical. When I say I'm a Medicare for All advocate, I hope you understand it's because I've spent hours on hold with my insurance companies when they won't cover the cost of my care. It's because I've had to sue insurance companies when they tell me I need to pay thousands of dollars out of my own pocket for the cost of full-time care. And I have a great private insurance plan. I understand what you are saying about keeping private plans. But I guess my question is, what does preserving private insurance really do for people?
It depends on the plan. Look, you know what my bills were for my hospitalization? Were $280,000. I get it, man. I'm not new to this. I'm not where you are, but I get it. I fully get it. The cost of my son were well over a million dollars. That's why we have to do the additional things, like making sure that home healthcare is covered.
So I would opine that the difference between Joe Biden and ADI, the disabled activist who's been fighting very, very hard, not only on his own behalf, but Medicare for All, can afford those million dollars in health insurance bills that he had for himself, his own coverage, as well as his son. Joining me tonight are Joy Bunton, the organizer for the Medicare for All march here in Chicago tomorrow, and my good colleague, Kit Cabello. Thank you both for joining me. I wanted to run that clip to show everyone what we're up against and why people nationwide are mobilizing tomorrow to fight for Medicare for All.
Well, Joy, I think it's only fair that you should start off and tell people about the March for Medicare for All Chicago, and then I will follow up.
Oh, okay. It just makes me mad when I see that.
I know, Joy. It boils my blood every time I see that clip. And I also want to mention, there was a fantastic disabled roundtable discussion on Fred Hampton leftists the other night, leftists. It was live, I got to watch the rebroadcast, but you want to hear some horror stories about what people have to do to fight for healthcare that can't afford it, like Joe Biden and everybody else in Congress that can't have health plans. Tell us about tomorrow.
Tomorrow, we are going to march because of what you just saw there. Basically, it's like you have, you know, someone with this severe disability, debilitating disability, and he's like, can you help me out? Can you help everyone out? And he's just like, oh, I get it. I get it, man. I have my own thing, but didn't Obama help him pay for his son's medical expenses, or he at least offered something? And he himself, I think, is a millionaire, because when he was a senator, most of those senators are millionaires, so even though it's an expense, it's like he could still get, you know, get credit or whatever, so he still has options. But, okay, so tomorrow, because of stuff like that.
Obama did offer, but I don't know that Obama actually put any money, but yeah, he did offer. Biden was on the record, yeah.
Yeah. So for it to be like that, where it's like you need a more multimillionaire, you know, person to help you out, or offer, it must be nice. If someone offered me, thank you. But, okay, tomorrow, we're getting together at Maggie Daley Park across from Blue Cross Blue Shield Building at 11 o'clock, and we're gonna start marching at 12 o'clock, and we're going down to the Federal Plaza, where we're gonna start our rally with the help of Kit Cabello and Dan Leffler for Hard Knocks, Hard Lens Media, they're gonna be MCs. And you're one of the speakers, I'm one of the speakers, and we're basically gonna tell Congress and the world, hopefully the whole world is watching, that we want Medicare for All, and we want it now, everybody in, nobody out. We don't care what they say, this is what we want, and we're gonna be heard, and we're gonna make our voices heard, and they need to listen.
Can you tell us about some of the other guest speakers that will be joining us? And thank you for the honor and the privilege of my being able to share my story with the crowd tomorrow, with the group.
Sure, well, you have, you know, you have your own story that I think people need to hear, and you were gracious enough to let us, you know, let me have an opportunity to promote the march. That wasn't, you know, the reason, but it didn't hurt, and the whole group, you know, agreed to it. It wasn't like I told them, this is what's gonna happen, you know? It's like, I told them about it, they got to also decide, and so it was a group decision. It was democratic. But, sure, no problem. So the other speakers we have is Dr. Pam Gronemeyer, she's with physicians for National Health Program, Illinois, or PNHP, and she's with PDA Illinois, and she's gonna be speaking. We also have Martine Chisholm, who is National Nurses United's Medicare Leadership Graduate. That always gets stuck in, I always get stuck trying to say it. She's gonna be speaking, she's gonna be great. And we also have Junaid Ahmed, running against Raja Rahamamurti in the 8th District. And we also have Jamal Green, a powerful activist. I think you said you've had him on the show before?
Twice now, yeah. He's a friend of ours.
An outstanding hero, an outstanding hero activist and mayoral candidate during the 2019 mayoral election in the city of Chicago, when the few progressives.
Yes, he's full of fire, so I had to get him, because I love how he pushes back against the mayor, and I love how he shut down the Chase branches when it was discovered that they weren't giving out mortgages fairly to the black and brown communities compared to the white, you know, neighborhoods, because, you know, Chicago's still one of the most segregated cities. So we have him, we have Curtis Harris, who is a disabilities advocate, he's with the Illinois Development of Disabilities, Council of Developmental Disabilities, and he's got autism, he's with Chicagoland Autism Connection, as well as from Access Living, Access Living suggested him, and I just snatched him right up. And I'm probably forgetting Troy Hernandez, Troy Hernandez is going to speak as well. And I think I've got everybody, it's like eight of them.
So the march starts at Maggie Daley Plaza, that's where everyone will be organizing in advance, near the Blue Cross Blue Shield Building, and at 11:00 AM, everyone will assemble and then march to Federal Plaza. The march will probably take maybe about an hour, is what the estimate is to get, it's maybe about a mile, mile and a half out of Federal Plaza, and that's where everyone will be able to assemble, protest, and listen to all these fantastic speakers that Joy and Nimesh Patel, your associate organizer, have been laboring to put together. I know you guys have put a lot of work into this. It's not an easy thing, even though I know that you're under the national umbrella, I really tip my hat to you for everything you've managed to put in place.
Thank you. I did forget a speaker, I forgot Rabbi Michael Ben Yosef, who's with Chicago Activists for Justice, something like that. He's also gonna be speaking, yeah. But yeah, thank you.
So there are a lot of people that will be speaking, and Daniel and I are very honored to be MCs for this historic event. I want everyone to be clear that after this march, after tomorrow, while it will be historic, and this is happening nationwide, we gotta keep on marching. It must be continuous, an ongoing fight, because what we heard there from Joe Biden saying that he gets it, no, he does not get it, because we did not get anything with forced to vote. The progressives did not, especially those in power, were not there. We need them here with us tomorrow, and they should show up as we want them to. Please show up, please be there, because we can't afford to wait anymore. We can't wait one more year, we can't wait 30 years. This needs to happen now. This bold initiative for Medicare for All, this fight for single payer healthcare must happen. So I want to hear somebody like Joe Biden say, I get it. No, you don't. You don't get it. You don't get the fact that in the United States, richest country in the world, we have a thing called medical bankruptcy, one of the leading causes of homelessness is medical bankruptcy, medical debt. There are people who are walking out the hospital, just with COVID-19 alone, we're gonna focus on that little fantastic little virus, there are people walking out hospitals with $100K or $1 million in medical debt. I don't know anyone in my immediate social circle that can pay off that kind of debt, but we've had these problems even before 2020, and going now into 2021, we need to have single payer healthcare. The debate is over, there's no debate, there's no need to have a debate. Other countries have figured it out. Other countries provide healthcare for their citizens. So when Joe Biden says that he gets it, he gets it, what he really means is, okay, I maybe might give you some crumbs, but stop complaining. We have every right to protest in front of these politicians' offices. We have every right to protest in front of our homes, because they have a gold-plated healthcare. They gave themselves more benefits during 2020, they gave us nothing. So as far as I'm concerned, we keep on marching, we keep on pushing forward, and we never back down. Joe Biden can say that he gets it, he gets it, he gets it, he gets it. If he really gave a damn, hey, he'd probably put on a public option, but we're not getting that either. More false promises, because once again, we live in this neoliberal nightmare where all of us are struggling. I am sick and tired of reporting stories about how Medicare for All can actually be beneficial, because the thing is, at the end of the day, when we get to the end of those stories, I have to return back to reality, and the fact that in the United States, we don't have single payer healthcare, we don't have Medicare for All. And I understand that there's a lot of people that respect their political leaders or someone in office, but these politicians do not deserve to be hero worshiped. They are public servants, they work for us, not the other way around. I cannot be told to wait anymore. I am tired of waiting. I am tired of being told, maybe, maybe, maybe. Take that initiative and fight. It's who we are, but yet when I do live streams on Hard Lens Media and I talk about Medicare for All, sometimes in the comment section, I get some comments from people who live overseas, and they say, I'm shocked you Americans take this. Sometimes it's, I thought you Americans were tougher, why aren't you fighting for this? Your people are dying. In my country, we would riot. In my country, we'd elect these people out. In my country, we wouldn't put these people on a pedestal. In my country, we wouldn't worship them. In my country, our media wouldn't protect them. We'd fight, we'd fight. The whole world is watching us. So I am tired of being told to wait. No more, no more medical bankruptcy, no more people suffering, no more people in medical debt. When you're sick, you get help. When you have an ailment, you get treated. And you walk out the hospital a better person, healed, not in debt. This is a nightmare that we have here, that's been going on for far too long, thanks to the pharmaceutical industry, which is causing this opioid crisis that we have, and thanks to the fantastic health insurance industry that's crippling us as well. The thing is, Biden, no one is saying to get rid of their private healthcare, but the thing is, you have the criminals dictating to the American people what can and cannot be done, because thanks to money in politics, thanks to Citizens United, McCutcheon's decision where money is speech and corporations are people, Big Pharma and the health insurance industry, you know what they do? They tell their politicians, whom they bought, how to write the laws, because they have the final say. And so if those politicians won't be here, if those politicians will listen to their Democratic leaders and their Republican leaders, if they're gonna listen to their corporate donors, then they gotta go. I don't care if that's your favorite person, I don't care if they put out feel-good tweets. A feel-good tweet doesn't solve the problem. I need action, not statements, deeds, not words. And there are millions of us across this country, and I don't care what your political ideology is, we are all suffering. So tomorrow, July 24th, we're marching for Medicare for All. And heroic activists like you, Joy, and so many others that have gone through so much getting up to this event are the leaders that we need to fight for this better future. But it can't end tomorrow, it must be continuous. So I take it with great pride that Jerry and I and Daniel will be there, and we'll be standing in solidarity with so many other heroic people across this country. Medicare for All, Medicare for All, the debate is over, because there's never need for a debate in the first place.
Woo! That's it. Good night, everybody.
Fire! I wanna sit like a fiery mole.
How do you follow up? How do you follow that up? I have to like, I had to like type my remarks for tomorrow, and I hope I can match that level of passion that Kit always brings to the conversation. Thank you, Kit.
Right?
Yeah, I mean, what more is there to say?
No, 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 you, no, no, guys, let's talk, let's talk. Medicare for All, come on, Joy, come on, Jerry.
Medicare for All, woo!
Here's something, here's something that, you know, to support what you're saying, Kit, there is going to be a tsunami, a tsunami of disability-related applications to our government from people who have survived COVID, that are gonna be dealing with all these secondary health problems now, respiratory illnesses, all of the other damage that their systems have suffered because of COVID. That's gonna happen. That's what they were talking about on the Disability Roundtable the other night, and unfortunately, it's gonna take so many more Americans who were in good health that caught COVID and are suffering from it, that are suddenly gonna understand what disabled people and people who are homeless and people that don't have the millions of dollars that Joe Biden or President Obama or Nancy Pelosi or any other of our elected representatives have with their Cadillac healthcare plans to take care of their healthcare issues. So when you think about the fact that during a global pandemic, our leaders don't think that Medicare for All or single payer is important, and you now have the tsunami of other claims that are gonna be filed, on top of the fact that most of America has woken up to the fact that having your healthcare tied to your job is insane, and this is what they look at in other countries. It keeps people servile, it keeps them asleep, it isn't until they might lose their job that they lose their healthcare that they suddenly realize why a proposal like Medicare for All or single payer is so goddamn important.
Yes, it's so important. Definitely agree.
So when we look at this problem that we have in this country, the thing is, corporate media and our politicians have created this atmosphere where they're afraid to really shake the boat, because the leadership, our political leaders, and again, the corporations and the lobby groups that buy our politicians, see, they're the ones who write the laws. What a lot of people need to remember, or at least understand, is that our lawmakers, they're not there in Congress, you know, thinking, hmm, how can I make my constituents' lives easier? See, what they're doing is, they're on the phone, talking to their donors. That's Democratic and Republican lawmakers, folks. So if you're a diehard vote blue no matter who, or diehard red Republican voter, your lawmakers in the United States Senate and House are calling their corporate donors so they can get more money, so they can get ready for the next election, so that they can run the campaign trailers, make their false promises, so they can get back into Washington DC, so they can get in their seat and call their donors for more donations, and the cycle repeats itself over and over again. And what we must do now is take that fantastic wheel from our lawmakers, Democrats and Republicans, and break it over our knee. Break it over their heads, you know what? Better yet, break it over their heads, because they haven't delivered anything to us. At the height of a global pandemic, they let us rot. Our government abandoned us, our lawmakers did, that's what they did. There's no debate about it, there's no conversation. They left us to rot. So what do we owe them? Zero. If they say that we're being violent or mean, well, we have every right, we have a lot to a right of things, to be mean, angry, and push back at our Democratic and Republican lawmakers. There's a lot of Americans out there that have a right to be angry. No more of these feel-good tweets, no more of these feel-good statements. I understand, and look, I agree with them, they're nice, but they're on paper, they're on Twitter. I need to see these lawmakers fight on the floor, and that means making Nancy, Nancy Pelosi.
Ice cream Pelosi.
Ice cream.
Ice cream Pelosi, Chuckie Boy Schumer, and all the other lawmakers, Democrat and Republican, because I want to include the lawmakers, because there's a big difference between the Republican/Democratic establishment and the American voter. I'm talking about these establishment bastards that have let this go on for decades. How many good people have we lost? How many brothers and sisters have died? How many mothers and fathers, children, uncles, aunts, nephews, nieces, grandparents, from stuff that's treatable? Yet in other countries, we are not following their example. They have single payer healthcare. Now, I want to be very clear, there is no such thing as perfect, there never will be anything called perfect. But what we have here in the United States, when we're, I believe, we're at 36th place in the world in regards to healthcare for its citizens? You know, according to corporate media from Fox News, MSNBC, CNN, something I always heard from the media and from our politicians, growing up as a little kid, that's right, even I was young at one point, that we were number one, we were the best, we were unstoppable, magnificent, brilliant. But what does it say about a country? What does it say about a country where we bail out the Wall Street executives and the bankers? We go to war with people that haven't done anything to us. We have a system that just allows continuous corruption, but we can't take care of our people. We're fighting for each other right now. We're fighting for those that are not here with us, and we owe it to those who are not yet born for a better future. Now, it might be the end for us, but it's not the end for that next generation coming. And I want to look them in the eye with pride. I don't want to look down on the ground saying, oh, well, I wish I could have done this, I wish I could have done that, but I was too afraid. It means we're gonna be doing these marches every single month, we have to. We have to make this continuous. It just can't stop tomorrow, it has to go on and on and on, and there will be a cost, a high cost.
If I can address.
Perhaps you'd have to step up for it.
If I can address something that just came through in the live chat, completely speaking to your point, Kit, we have to do this every month, we have to do this continuously. I think that a big component that might help pressure, make our elected representatives uncomfortable, more uncomfortable, is the thought of a general strike, which will take a lot of sacrifice and a lot of organizing, but as we saw with the Cook County strike here in Chicago against Tony Preckwinkle, it got results, and as Arturo Medina is telling us in the live chat, can every worker in the US go on a nationwide strike, like, don't come to work for weeks and months until we all get healthcare? Would that take us into the Ayn Rand level of civilization? Now, Art, I don't know that we should do it for weeks and months, I think maybe a week, two weeks of a general strike would definitely drive the message home that if you're gonna shut down the entire nation on the behalf of all of those the most vulnerable in our society that need healthcare, our essential workers, our low-paid minimum wage workers, the middle class, the lower class, we need relief. And Kit, remind me, during the election, didn't President Biden say something about he was an advocate of single payer, if I'm recalling correctly?
Well, he was kind of indicating, said that, but let's remember that this is the Democratic establishment Joe Biden, who has never apologized for the crime bill, who was against busing and desegregation, who worked with segregationists. This is the same Joe Biden who sided with the credit card corporations to make student debt what it is. This is the same Joe Biden who voted for the war in Iraq. This is the same Joe Biden who helped contribute with his Democratic and Republican colleagues for decades to create this neoliberal nightmare. So yeah, he might have said it. Didn't he believe it? No, because this is the architect of the nightmare we are in. Even Bill Clinton, and look, I'm not a fan of these politicians, even Bill Clinton apologized for that crime bill, and you can take that with a grain of salt, whether he really meant that or not. But Biden never has. What do we owe Joe Biden? He's the man who made this nightmare. He's the one who told that activist that he doesn't believe in Medicare for All. Why do I need to owe Joe Biden anything? What? Because he's apparently better than Trump? This system gave us Trump, and that's one of the architects. So nothing has fundamentally changed. So if Joe Biden wants to do a public option, or dare I say, maybe even go further with Medicare for All, find that president, you can do so with an executive order like that, you can get rid of student debt like that, with an executive order, he can do these things, but he won't.
Wait, wait, Kit, won't the parliamentarian stop him? Like, parliamentarian, everything else?
A Senate parliamentarian, here's the thing. The president has the vice president, and the vice president has a little secretary called the parliamentarian. They both can overrule the parliamentarian. The parliamentarian is just a glorified secretary who thinks that they're great. Actually, you know what? The Senate parliamentarian is an intern that thinks they're gonna get the job. That's who the Senate parliamentarian is. A Senate parliamentarian is someone that has no power, but yet here we are, somehow, corporate media and the DNC establishment has elevated a non-elected official as the end-all, be-all vote, and the reason why they're doing this is because they want to scapegoat. Kamala and Biden do not want to take or be held accountable for their inaction and their indecision, so they decided to put it on the parliamentarian. Wow, the parliamentarian, what's next? Blaming the Atlantis, the magician of Atlantis or something? Or some other person, some other random person? I could pull out a random name right now, but the parliamentarian has no say, because they have no power, because they're a non-elected official, because it can be overridden by the vice president and the president, yet Biden and Harris are choosing not to.
Well, I would say too, the parliamentarian and Joe Manchin and Kirsten Sinema are the new Mitch McConnell's. The Democrats are creating the new villain that they will not stand up to, that they will allow to let things stay the way they are, because they don't really want to make any of this priority or change it. The reason I brought up Biden, Kit, and what he was claiming he would look into in single payer during the primaries was this article I've got up on screen now, you know, he won the election, now former Vice President Joe Biden says, oh, no, I'm sorry, this is from 2020, "He was not reconsidering his opposition to single payer healthcare despite the strain that the coronavirus pandemic has put on the existing healthcare system. Single payer will not solve that at all," Biden said during an interview on MSNBC. I can't wait to see if he says the same thing once all of these COVID survivors have to file for other disability benefits in healthcare life and their health has been impacted. Millions of people are expected to lose their private health insurance as coronavirus's economic toll sweeps the nation, and still, he has said, he will veto a bill for Medicare for All or single payer if it comes across his desk. It's obscene.
Yeah, and this would be pragmatic choice, that everyone was saying, well, we gotta stop Trump. Look, I understand Trump made a lot of people uncomfortable. I understand Trump was this person that triggered a lot of people, but there's a reason why we got Trump, because of the Barack Obama administration that chose not to follow through, even when they had a super majority in Democratic House and Senate early on, they could have done a public option. Remember, the Affordable Care Act is really Romney Care, which is again, something from the Heritage Foundation. They could have added in a public option, but they didn't. And so all these neoliberal compromises that Barack Obama and then Vice President Joe Biden chose to do, gave us Trump. And my fear is, look, Trump can very well run again in 2024, or we get somebody far, far worse, because that's the legacy of neoliberal Democrats, and somebody like Joe Biden, who's the architect, who has a willing sidekick like Kamala Harris to go along with it, will contribute to that nightmare, but yet they're gonna blame us. I don't owe the DNC and RNC anything, which is why I'm an independent voter. I voted third party in 2016, I did it again in 2020, I'm now doing it for state elections and for city elections now. You I did it again in 2020. I'm now doing it for state elections and for city elections now. You gotta earn my vote. Show me you'll fight. And if that offends people that I'm going to vote 2024 as third party, well, too bad, so sad, because the Democrats have done nothing. And I won't vote Republican. So Democrats, progressives in the Democratic Party, you said you were going to bring the ruckus. I'm hearing nothing, and that frightens me more than a Trump presidency.
Well, Kit, we're also going to be having the emergence of the People's Party that formed in California and seems to be taking root nationwide. Paula Jean Swearingen, I believe, was interviewed the other night by Jimmy Dore. She left the Justice Democrats for all the reasons that we're talking about here. And she, I think, if I remember, in the interview, she said that she is looking to join the People's Party. So that might be the next party since progressive has been co-opted by the phony Democrats and the fraud squad, who all ran on claiming they were progressives and then got into office and just more of the same. Joy, I want to ask you, have you heard any chatter across the country from the other cities that are hosting the marches as far as what other elected representatives might be in attendance? Because at the top of the show, we were talking about the fact that we want to see our elected representatives come out to this, these marches, but it doesn't really seem that any of them, I, I don't know that Bernie Sanders is showing up. I don't know that AOC is showing up. I don't know that, I mean, as much as we're hoping Nina Turner might change some things, as she's an advocate for Medicare for All, I haven't heard anything from her about showing up to one of these marches. What's, what's the ears to the ground as far as our politicians or elected representatives attending or even paying attention to what's happening tomorrow?
I'm not aware of anyone in Congress coming. I just know that there are people at lower levels. Like, we don't, we don't have anyone speaking that's an elected official, but we do expect them to, they've said they are coming. As far as I know, they're going to be there unless something happens. We have, you know, state, state Senator Mike Simmons and State Representative Kelly Cassidy. And we have the Chicago Democratic Socialist Caucus, as well as Progressive Caucus Andre Vasquez coming and Brandon Johnson, Cook County Commissioner. But in terms of elected officials that are in Congress, no, I do not, I'm not aware of it. I'll put it that way.
What a surprise.
Yeah, shocked.
I'm shocked, shocked.
But I would like to say that in addition to holding our representatives accountable, I think what will be more effective is if we also turn our gaze to the lobbyists and the health insurance companies and the big pharma, because that's really the boss of Congress, not the voters they visit should be. That's who they listen to. So unless we put pressure on them, they'll just continue to just go, you know, pass on the head and go, yeah, 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 whatever. So I think that's what, where we need to turn, turn our gaze, because that's one of the reasons why I really wanted Jamal Green to speak, because of what happened with Chase. Put the pressure on them. They're the ones that we bailed out with our money, our taxpayer money or whatever. Pay, bail them out, and they continue these practices, including racist practices, obviously, because of what he had to do shutting them down. And so, and plus, we also need to address those racial disparities, because as much as the universal programs are important and necessary, it doesn't fix the racial issue. And so we need to do both. We need to include the racial issue, which I think will help increase awareness and involvement of Black and Brown brothers and sisters who keep getting discriminated against. I think that's how we also build engagement and get more people involved in more, paying more attention and looking at, at the money. Like, where's the money coming from? What if we were to offer to bribe them the amount that they're getting bribed?
I actually, Joy, I actually have a proposal on that end. Now, it would take, it would take a collective organizing across the country, but what if the citizens of the United States of America organized and created a corporation that everybody puts some money into so that we could hire lobbyists to lobby our elected representatives the way every other corporation in the United States lobbies and pays them to get their way, even though they claim they are elected representatives. We are the corporate states of America. So I think maybe we actually need to incorporate and have the budget to hire lobbyists to get our elected representatives to do what the F they're supposed to be doing there for us, instead of the people that are paying them bribes. I'm sorry, I mean, campaign contributions.
Right, right. Campaign contributions.
Yeah, that are gonna, that are gonna, yeah, that are, that are gonna further their agendas instead of the agendas of the United, all of us, all of us.
Right.
And I mean, and I'm, I'm not being facetious. I actually like tossed that by a friend of mine several years ago. I'm like, what if we all organized and created a corporation so we could hire lobbyists? It's not, I mean, anyone can form a corporation. Can the citizens of the United States form a corporation specifically for that reason? To make a statement and to hire lobbyists with whatever collective pool of money that corporation has, because you know, corporations are people, to put some pressure on our, 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 our Congress people, the same way they will, they gladly take money and influence from the lobbyists and those influence peddlers.
Because a lot of pressure was able to, even though they still messed up, but was able to start getting Amazon to pay their, you know, employees $15 an hour. They still, you know, got all these issues with the union, with Bessemer and whatnot. And apparently, they're going to have a hearing because it was discovered, like, no surprise, that they cheated with, with, you know, with, with trying to get the, you know, they cheated, so they're going to have another vote, I believe. The vote may still end up in their favor. We'll see. But, but that's where I'd like to, to channel my own attention towards trying to get more direct to, to those bosses, because those are the bosses. That's who they're listening to, is the people that are giving them the donations. And that's how, that's how, you know, embarrassing these companies and the, and the CEOs and embarrassing the reps that are taking the money. Say, okay, this guy took this asshole's money, and so you need to return that money. Pressure them to say, you took this money, take, send it back, or we're calling you out. We're calling you out anyway. So we're calling them out and these a-holes that give them the money. So we need to add that. You can still, you know, pressure our own people, but I think we need to add something. I'm for the everything but the kitchen sink, just everything. Needs to be multi-pronged. Because if you just do one area, then the other areas get neglected. So I want to do everything.
Well, it's going to take a lot more work beyond tomorrow, but it's, it's certainly the rallying and the starting point. I want to share something else that happened today, Joy. We're very, very proud of your appearance today on The Hill. You went on, you spoke with Ryan Grim and I don't know if it was other co-hosts, but let me share this with our viewing audience really quickly. Joy represented.
I tried.
Oh, no, no, you, you didn't just try. You did it very well. Why it's not.
You did a fantastic job.
I'm clicking the play button. Let me just reload it real quickly.
Me and my smoke detector alarm.
There we go. All right, here we go.
Sorry.
Well, yeah, federal. Right now, we're focusing on the federal, well, yeah, federal issue. We're focusing on saying that we want Medicare for All. We haven't named the legislation, but we're basically saying we want Medicare for All. We want it for everyone. We want it now. Everybody in, nobody out.
Joy, again, hats off to you, man. That, that, that's fantastic. You got that now, representing Chicago along with Tara Reid during that clip. Was this morning? There you go. Was that this morning or this week?
Ryan Grim? Oh, no, that was, was already yesterday. Time fly. Yeah, it was yesterday morning. I had been nudging him for quite a few weeks anyway, so I was just, you know, trying to, like, hey, so we're not, because, because I send him DMs and sometimes he'll respond. And, and I'll be like, hey, you know, people are kind of mad at you, you know, this would be a perfect time.
You know, that was a good, that was a good strategy. I'm not the biggest fan of Ryan Grim, but I will, I will give him props. And I appreciate the fact he listened to you and he responded, and he was, he gave you and Tara the platform there to be able to advocate for everyone across the nation, knowing what's happening tomorrow, to come out and participate.
Thanks, because sometimes, I'm sorry, I was just going to say that sometimes, sometimes you can be mean, sometimes you can be nice. Sometimes being mean doesn't work. Sometimes being nice does. It either, it's not always the same thing that's going to work with everybody. It depends on the person. So that's, so with him, I was like, let me just, while this is happening over here, I'm going to do this over here. And so then I was able to, you know, I was being a little strategic. And, and he, he's done some good stories that, that are important to us Black folks with voting and stuff like that. And so I appreciated that. And so I'll, I'll give him a congratulations when he does something that a lot of people aren't covering that, that a lot of Black people care about. So I was like, you know, yeah, that was good. Thanks. Good job. So I was doing that too, so.
So real quick, I did see a comment that did catch my attention, especially for tomorrow. Right now, it's nice and cool with the storm, but it's going to be hot tomorrow. Shout out to Arturo Medina. It's going to be hot tomorrow. The march should stay safe from the heat. However, everyone, look, wear a mask, wash your hands, let's do some social distancing. I know it's a march and everything, but let's be safe about it. Number two.
Yes, please.
Lay, bring, ha, let me start it over again. Bring plenty of water.
Yes, please.
Bring plenty of water and let's help each other out. Okay, let's all be safe about this.
Yeah.
Joy, before I let you go, because I know you've probably got a lot of other stuff to, to work on tonight in preparation for tomorrow. Any, any numbers yet from the website as far as the expected turnout? How many, how many people might be showing up?
Well, it's hard to gauge because I, I believe there are a lot of people that are coming that haven't signed up. So in terms of just signed up with Mobilize, it's, it's still under 200, but it keeps getting higher. Because before it was like 100 some, and then it's like 175. And so it just keeps, every time I turn around, there's like a notification it sends me that says someone signed up. So, so hopefully there'll be even more. Well, there should be.
Do you have any word on if our local news stations will be coming out, 2579 Fox 32?
I need to reach out to them.
Channel 11. Most importantly, Chicago Tonight, yeah.
Yeah, Chicago Tonight, I'm going to send a little reminder, because I sent some, I sent something a while ago and I didn't hear anything. And a while ago, I sent something to Natalie McCormick at WBEZ. And before she had said that she was giving it to their weekend reporter to cover it. And so earlier today, I sent a reminder like, yeah, remember when you said, so can, you know, is that going to happen? Or, you know, so a lot of times, a lot of stuff is follow-up. And sometimes it's hard because there's so much other stuff going on. I'll forget. And I'm like, I need to get back to some. So tonight, I'm definitely going to be doing that. Oh, there was a, I sent a press release to WCPT because someone from Medicare for All Northern Illinois, I think it was, had, knew someone there. And so I had to type that up real quick. Well, it took me a while, because I wanted to, you know, make sure I dotted all the i's and crossed the t's. And I sent that. And so my sister said she heard it on the, on the radio on WPTC, so that's good right there.
I think you're going to have a much bigger turnout than you expect tomorrow. I think social media right now is ablaze with everyone talking about this. Nationwide, marches in every city, media cannot ignore us, cannot ignore the message we're all bringing to advocate for all. So once again, I, I thank you from the bottom of my heart for you and Nimesh and the rest of your organizers, putting in all the time and effort to get this together, along with our national organizers, and we'll see you tomorrow at the march.
Right. So real quick, I mean, so, so people, in case they missed the march.
Right.
We're at, it's going to be at Federal Plaza, and then there is the, the march itself. So where's that going to be at? Where's it going to start from the march?
Well, the march.
Starting, we start with the march at Maggie Daley Park, across Blue Cross Blue Shield Building. That's, we gather at 11, start marching at 12, and we expect to start the rally at Federal Plaza at 1 o'clock. I know there's, there's been some confusion, because I didn't make it clear enough on the, so I updated that today. And I have got newer updated flyers that will hopefully make it more clear and just, or just ask, and I'll say, no, this is it. Start here and there.
Gather at 11, start marching. Just gather at 11 at Maggie Daley Plaza, Blue Cross Blue Shield Building. 12 o'clock, the march begins.
Right.
To Federal Plaza, and we expect all the marches to arrive to Federal Plaza by about 1 PM, at which point the speakers will then get up and trust the, the protesters and the, well, the marchers.
Yes, yes. Because it turns out that Kathy Powers, she's a great advocate for disabilities. She was saying that if we did it the other way around, it would be harder, because apparently there's an incline that I was never thought about, because I'm just presuming it's flat, but no, that it's harder for people with disabilities to go the other way. So that's why we're going the way we're going. So it'll be easier to go down in slope instead of up.
Art, Arturo in the live chat said the plaza, that's where they got that Picasso.
That's right.
That's Daily Plaza. That's not Federal Plaza. The Blues Brothers went to Daily Plaza. We're going to Federal Plaza.
The Federal Plaza has a big red thing.
Yeah, they've got a big.
Big red thing. Yeah, it looks kind of like that.
Abstract shapes.
I think they call it the flamingo. I think they call it the flamingo, yeah.
I should know, but yeah, I think that's it. It's kind of like big red thing. Yeah, can't miss it.
But Art also chimes in, that's forgetting the joke. Okay. So listen, Joy. Yes.
I put that, I posted like when they were saying, you know, we're on our way to Chicago, and so I got that GIF in one of my tweets.
Kit, do you have a pair of Wayfarers? You got a pair of sunglasses like them?
Uh, no, but I do have a pair of sunglasses that I'll wear in honor for the. Not the Blues Brothers, 2000. I, I don't acknowledge that movie.
Dude, that movie never happened. I'm going to be wearing.
What movie is that? I don't remember.
Doesn't exist.
I'll be wearing my black, my, my, I'm sorry, my, my turtle, tortoise shell, Wayfarers. You wear your sunglasses, we'll be there to represent on be, on behalf of Jake and Elwood.
That's right, Jake and Elwood. We're on a mission from God.
We are on a mission from God. Perfect, perfect slogan for this effort.
That's right. And the whole world is watching, man.
You better believe.
We're stealing them. Let's borrow them, turn them around, make them ours.
Well, Joy, I want to have you on the show again in the future, because there's going to be a lot of follow-up to what happens tomorrow. In the meantime, I'll let you go. Kit and I are going to cover a couple more stories here. And again, thanks for everything you've done or doing, and we will see you tomorrow.
You're welcome. And thanks for having me.
Anytime.
See you guys later.
Good night.
Bye.
That was a pleasure. She's such a lovely woman, lovely, strong woman, doing what she's doing on behalf of everyone here in Chicago.
Fantastic, fantastic work. So everyone, we're going to be there. See, I'll see all of you at Federal Plaza. I know the march is starting over there at the Maggie, Maggie Daley.
Maggie Daley Park, by the, by the, by the Blue Cross Blue Shield Building.
Yes, by Blue Cross Blue Shield Building. So there we go. I know, Jerry, I'll see you at the Federal Plaza. So this is going to be an important event for everyone to attend. Everyone who's watching, especially for those who live out of state, please double check and triple check what area the March for Medicare for All be in your neck of the woods. But Chicago, let's lead the way. Let's show them how it's done, Chicago style.
And also, I want to say our banner below lets people know if you're not in Chicago, go to the medic, m4mforall.org website to find a march location in your area. Because I know that there isn't one in Indiana, but you know, they're not too far from, from Chicago. So we're expecting that we'll have a lot of people from Indiana.
Shout out to our brothers and sisters in Indiana.
You got it. So shifting gears here now, as, as far as marches go, Kit, I'm going to bring up this story, and I want to read from the story first before we talk about it. This past week, I have the, well, when I'm on Instagram, there's an account that I follow called Chicago Media Takeout. And I could not keep track of the amount of shootings that they were reporting on this past week. Literally, I was like, every other day, I'm like, oh, did I read about that? Oh, no, no, there was another one. More people were gunned down. More people were shot. So this story comes to us from Block Club Chicago, Pascal Sabino. Westsiders to Hold March for Peace After Two Mass Shootings Within Minutes. There's No Respect for Life. This comes from North Lawndale. Westside residents are reckoning with the aftermath of two mass shootings that occurred just minutes apart and a few blocks away from each other Wednesday. Ucan, a firehouse community art center, and other non-violence groups organized a peace march to bring the community together after the shootings. The march is planned, was planned for 7 PM Friday, which was tonight, at the intersection of Douglas Boulevard and Christiana Avenue. And I would have looked to see if there was a way to like, there were any streams online to, to, for us to watch that, except we had Joy on and we were talking about Medicare for All March. Demarian Benson, 15, was killed in the first shooting, which happened about 6 PM Wednesday at Douglas Boulevard and Christiana Avenue, police said. Four others were shot, including a 16-year-old boy who was gravely wounded. Benson's mother told The Sun Times her son loved his family while he hung with the wrong crowd. He had a good heart and would help her navigate issues with her vision. "I just want him to be remembered for his sense of humor," she told the paper. "He was a genuine person. He'd do anything for you." The second shooting happened just minutes later at the intersection of Douglas and Ridgeway Avenues, wounding five people. A crowd was gathered outside Greater Garfield Park Missionary Baptist Church for funeral and repeat, repast when the shooting started, witnesses said. "The services were for Tyrone Toussaint, who was shot and killed July 7th," said a neighbor who attended the service. A service for a shooting victim, and then there's a shooting at the church during the funeral. When I left, or after the funeral, when I left that service. When I left, or after the funeral, when I left that service, I said, I need to get out of here because I know something's gonna happen. A lot of these guys were packing. It's just a given fact. So I get out of the way, said the neighbor who asked to remain anonymous. "The shooting that killed Toussaint and the subsequent attack outside his funeral may have been retaliation for previous incidents of violence," the neighbor said. I was actually thinking that as far as gang, uh, gang retaliation. "The shooters behind the attack need to be caught and held accountable," they said. Um, you know, first it was outside the Cook County, uh, uh, jail or, or Cook County prison, Cook County jail a few weeks back. When that rapper got shot, now we're shoot, they're retaliating at funerals. Um, well, look, marches are important. They bring attention to what's going on, but not gonna solve the problem.
Well, here's what's neat, needs to be addressed about the ever-growing crime situation here in the United States because, and also all the violence.
Especially Chicago, especially Chicago.
Especially here in Chicago. Look, um, you gotta blame the current politicians that made this system in the first place. It's our lawmakers. The war on drugs, the support of the prison industrial complex, the ever-increasing funding for police. And again, the problem has still remained. And there is a nightmare situation that's being created. Now, never forget too, that a lot of these areas where there's a lot of gun violence, they're heavily impoverished because the city, especially here in the city of Chicago. We are a hyper segregated city. This is a hyper segregated city. And a lot of communities on, on the west side and south side have been denied resources for decades. Even before Rahm Emanuel came into office, before Rahm Emanuel shut down 54 Chicago public schools and half the mental health facilities, this has been an ongoing problem and he just added more gasoline to the fire. But even then, our new mayor and our city council, again, especially some of these lawmakers that have been in for power for decades, they've created this situation. So here's what we have to do. We have to start, again, it kind of leads back to Medicare for All. We need to have Medicare for All. We need to have jobs programs. We need to have federal jobs guarantee X. We need to have universal basic income. We need to invest in our infrastructure, reopen our schools, fund our schools, fund the mental health facilities here. And actually, maybe dare I say it, have civilians handle situations that the police are definitely not trained to do. Now, if we can do that, that'd be great. The thing is we need lawmakers who have the courage and initiative to do that.
The balls to do it.
In, in, in 2023 will be the next Chicago municipal election for city council seats, Cook County seats, and yes, office of mayor. Now, we covered it in 2019 and I like to take pride that, you know, we, we interviewed some aldermen candidates who are now aldermen, who are doing very good things as progresses. But the thing is, there's not enough of them. Our mayor, I had hope for her, but, uh,
You know, as we're speaking about the infrastructure that's needed and from our elected representatives, especially at city council. Uh, and we mentioned him just a few moments ago, J. Mal Green has been pushing for this youth center on the south side. Uh, his group, the Majesty All Stars have been begging the city to relinquish the land of this, uh, this school that's closed down, the property so that they could develop it as a youth center for uh, kids in those neighborhoods to find more opportunities to have the support, mental as well as training, uh, support for, uh, keeping them off the streets and, and giving them opportunities. Well, city council and mayor Lightfoot ignored that. And instead we've got this. Now, Mr. Green has, I, I was looking on social media, he hasn't commented on this yet, now that this has been passed and approved. He was very vocal, uh, before, when this was proposed because it came after his Majesty All Stars initiative, which would have been a privately, uh, run, uh, youth center on the south side, youth and training center. The city had to get involved and build the, um, the youth center, not grant the land that Majesty All Stars was asking for. And instead proposed, and this was recently passed by city council, to build the boy and, a boy and girls club on police, the police academy campus after city council approval. The plan will bring the west side a much-needed youth center, but critics said it's inappropriate to build a youth center at the controversial police training facility. And this is what people have been complaining about for the past several years, because I guess it's been proposed before, but now it got forced through after J. Mal's efforts. A controversial police training academy on the west side will also be the home of a new boys and girls club after the plan was approved by city council Wednesday. Now, one of the major criticisms a lot of people have, you would ask, well, why are you critical that it's gonna be on the CPD and fire training campus? Because it's gonna be near, uh, the campus where only two types of vocations are trained, police and fire department. I don't know that there are gonna be a lot of opportunities for the kids in this youth center to train in other areas that the Majesty All Stars initiative was planning and proposing. That had a lot to do with, I think, the pushback on placing the youth, uh, center on the campus of the, uh, new CPD academy. "The $8 million youth development center in the 4,400 block of West Chicago Avenue would be the first new boys and girls club built in decades. "The west side has been in dire need of better opportunities for young people," as you mentioned a moment ago, Kit, said Alderman Emma Mits, 37. "Building a youth center has been a priority for Mits since she was first elected in 2000. Someone has to look out for the kids and it's our responsibility, everyone, to look out for each other's children. Young people are in need of safe spaces right next to the police academy." Yeah, it'll be safe. Um, there were two mass shootings in Austin in the last week and one shooting Saturday, a 12-year-old and three teenagers were shot, which we just talked about. "Those young people who were out celebrating Saturday, where five of them were shot in my ward, they could have been at that boys and girls club," Mits said. "The club will have sports, recreation, academic assistance, wellness, training and leadership development programs on the same site as the $95 million joint public safety training academy under development. "The city will lease about a half an acre of land on the training academy's campus to the boys and girls club for $1 annually for at least 55 years. "We're convinced that this new club represents a transformational opportunity for young people in Chicago to promote healing and build bridges where few currently exist." Now, while residents and local leaders praised the recreation opportunities and after-school programs, many balked at the idea of having a youth center next door to a police training facility. Many young people and residents fought to block the training center when it was proposed in 2017. "Youth organizers for the No Cop Academy campaign criticized the training facility as a misuse of public funds, saying it added to an overinflated police budget while neglecting schools, "mental health centers and other social services that address the root causes of crime." I, I tend to feel that that's exactly what's at the heart of the problem with this proposal and approval. Um, it's putting more money into law enforcement at that police academy as opposed to what we here discussed with defunding the police to more, um, equitably distribute funds across the city for mental health centers, reopening schools, having youth centers like what J. Mal and the Majesty All Stars were proposing. "Organizers launched a petition signed by more than 500 people asking for the boys and girls club to choose a different west side location for the project. In an open letter to Leclerc, No Cop Academy, hashtag No Cop Academy organizer said, 'Black and brown youth are being used as props "in a PR strategy to ease those rising tensions between the general public and police. They just want to make it sound good. And this is the ultimate talking point,' said Caleb Ottman, an organizer for hashtag No Cop Academy." I can't argue with him, Kit, uh, given what J. Mal and, and his group were proposing. It was ready to go. They just needed, uh, the city to release the land for their initiative.
So when you had Jamal Green on the show twice, and I had the privilege of being on the show, uh, with you guys as well. Again, it was fantastic to, uh, get a chance to speak to Jamal Green. Um, let's face it, the city actively did everything it could to derail it and make sure that it wasn't gonna happen in the way that any of the activists really wanted to go. And this is a way of intimidation and bullying. This is a way for them to continue to control their narrative. Uh, this is a way for the city to flex its own political power and muscle. But let's face it, we need community centers. Uh, but the land should be dedicated to that community center to help out young people get careers. Help out young people prepare for college. Help out young people to travel around the world, to help out young people support and build their communities up even stronger. That community, that land could be dedicated for many career paths, be it through the science and technologies, through entrepreneur programs, uh, towards environmental studies and so much more. What we're seeing right now is bullying. The land should be dedicated to the schools, to, to, to the community centers. And also I want to give a shout out to Gamer for Life who mentioned trade schools as well. Yes. So all these kids can learn something.
Yes.
They need to have a wide range of options. Now, I'm not an activist. I'm not a community organizer, but I can tell you this right now. If I was in their shoes, I would be furious. I would be enraged. And this requires more political action. And to the lawmakers and to the city council members, to the mayor's office, who just let this happen, turn a blind eye. 2023 and the city of Chicago will be the next municipal election.
It's coming.
I want to remind everyone in 2019, just a little side note, when we were covering it, Daniel and I, and some of our other members of our team. When we talked to people about the Chicago election in 2019, some people just didn't even know, random people, even close friends didn't even know we were having the election that year. 2023 is the next Chicago municipal election. You bear damn well believe that Chicago Corner and Hardlands Media will be talking about this. We need the word to get out so we get more people to, to turn out to vote and to bring in progressives and independents that will fight for us. Because what we see right now should not stand.
I don't think many of our elected representatives realize that their positions are not careers. It's a revolving door and we can make sure to show them that revolving door with new candidates that emerge. And if those new candidates who emerge end up stabbing us in the back, they can see the revolving door also.
They gotta go.
I think the issue we're really gonna face most of all in this next election cycle here in Chicago, Kit, is getting people out to vote because last election numbers were just got awful. And I know that that probably has a lot to do with citizens in Chicago just being fed up and frustrated that, look, we didn't have the greatest choices in the world anyway from that last clown car.
We had 19, well, we had 16 choices, 19 choices or something like that.
And life was the best of that batch, which even though many of us had reservations voting for her.
Hmm.
Uh, you know, it still holds your nose, push the lever and vote her in. And then she ended up, you know, she used the whole progressive label. She fooled us all. She was the progressive. Um, a lot of these phonies, Democrats right now, they're all progressives. They get in, they're not progressives. They're just co-opting what progressive meant. So I, I, I wonder if there will be any People's Party candidates running, uh, in Chicago during the next election cycle for city council as well as mayor. I'd like to see that happen.
Yeah, we need that. Um, and you know what? I want to see progressives step up, independents, third-party candidates, run for these city council seats, run for the office of mayor. What we have right now doesn't work. We're getting more of the same. Gentrification is still running amok in this city. Police corruption, running rampant, political corruption. There's still lead in our drinking water and so much worse. We have environmental racism and industrial facilities built on the south and west side neighborhoods. We have violence that's being unchecked. We have schools that are being underfunded. We need people in the city of Chicago to step up and fight. I'm seeing Jay Smith, Kit for mayor. While that does sound good, here's the situation. You need to have a big political war chest.
That's.
Run for city politics. And I, I'm sorry to say that because again, Chicago is number one. We're number two when DC is added, but, um.
Kit, we do have a very large audience on Hardlands Media and Chicago Corner. We could perhaps, that war chest might not be as unobtainable as you think.
It's, it's just, it's a little bit more complicated than that, folks, because if you anything, uh, you could check out, uh, some of our interviews that we did with Clean Cook County. Uh, where again, like election integrity, you know, we, we actually recently had Nico House on Hardlands Media where he's covered a lot about election integrity issues. The thing is, it's to prepare for the legal challenges in the city and Cook County in regards for election integrity. So the thing is, I would, I want to, but if I want to do this, I want to have like legions and legions of people. We gotta, we, you gotta be in there to fight. But there, I know that there are a lot of activists and community organizers. See, the thing is corporate media shows that Chicago, Chicago is this violent area. This city is filled with a lot of good people. This city is filled with people who have gone on the line, who have put everything on the line to fight for that better future.
Gotham is, there, there are a lot of good people left in Gotham is what you're saying.
Yes, there are. There are. The Dark Knight. Yes, that's one, that's, yeah, there are a lot of good people in Gotham. I mean, Chicago, there you go. So, uh, and the thing is, we, we all need to step up. And 2023, again, 2023, 2023 is Chicago's municipal election. Let's have a higher voter turnout because again, the voter turnout in 2019 was low. And even in 2018, look, statistically proven, midterms, especially during the primaries, also have low voter turnout. So we gotta increase the turnout, but we also have to keep on hitting the streets and make these lawmakers' lives uncomfortable because we don't owe them anything. And for the progressives that are fighting, because there are progressives in the city council that are fighting for us, like Byron Cinco Lopez.
Yeah.
He's a progressive. We interviewed him when he was an activist and he since, and so many others, there's a few other progressives in, again, city, uh, city council that are fighting. Uh, I just saw that from Jay Smith, Batman is not real. Look, I don't know who Chicago superhero is, okay?
He hasn't emerged yet. You know, with all the billionaires in the world, you'd think one of them would have like stepped out and, and done what Batman does, but they're all cowards. They're all.
Oh, wait, correction, correction. When, when Trump was running in 2016, I forget when it was, but some kid asked him if he was Batman. I think he said yes.
Yeah, sure he is with his fat belly and utterly, utterly, uh, dementia-addled tertiary stages of syphilis brain. Um, anyway, like, no, no.
Look, the city is filled with good people. 2023 is the next municipal election cycle. We need to get the word out.
This is where Pilgrim just said it. They're not fit enough to be Batman. Absolutely. No, I said, getting off of the, off of the jokes about Batman. Yeah, no. And I think that what we're, we're, we've talked about this privately in, uh, in, uh, conversations and meetings. We really want to be able to use Hardlands Media and Chicago Corner to not only help vet the best candidates that will be running, but also see if we can rally out more voter turnout. The whole purpose of this channel and what you guys are doing on the national channel over at Hardlands Media is to get more civic engagement, to get more of our viewers involved. Thankfully, we've got a lot of people watching the channel, helping us build the channel. I want to remind everybody, if you like our show here on Chicago Corner, as well as Hardlands Media, and you haven't already liked and subscribed, what's taking so long? Share our channel, share our links. If you liked tonight's show, share it on your social media. The more people we have signing up and subscribing, the more word we get on the streets to, uh, to share what we're, what we're, what we're doing here to try to engage more people so we can hopefully affect some of that change and be part of that process. So, Kit, it's gonna be an exciting day tomorrow. Um, I'm really looking forward to it. I'm so honored that, uh, Joy's committee, uh, invited me to speak and I'm, I'm so thrilled to like be aligned with you and, and Daniel here at Hardlands Media and Chicago Corner to actually be in a position to have that opportunity. I'm, it's gonna be a good day tomorrow with you guys during the march and during the speech. So thank you for joining me tonight. It was really good, as always, to have your insight.
That's right. We're gonna keep on rocking the, uh, rocking and rolling. Let's all do we can to fight for that better future. We gotta step up.
And remember, if you're hearing it on the streets, you'll hear about it here on Chicago Corner. Stay safe, Chicago. We will see you tomorrow at the march and please have a good night and a safe weekend.